Good evening, and welcome to the September 11, 2025 zoning board of adjustment meeting. I'd like to call this to order. We have a quorum here for the zoning board, and I call this meeting of the Trophy Club zoning board of adjustment to order, and it is six o'clock PM. Just wanted to welcome everybody to this meeting, and also would like to ask that everyone turn their phones off so that we don't have any kind of disruption during our session here, and that we can get through this and have everyone heard and move forward. Our first point of adjustment is to have public comments. If anyone would like to speak to the board, please fill out a public comment form and hand it to Ms. Jackie Ross here. If you would like to speak on a public hearing item, an opportunity will be presented at that time. The board is not permitted to discuss or take action on any presentations made concerning matters that are not listed on the agenda. All right. With that all being said, agenda item number one is case ZBA 25-004, 213 Iverness Drive, conduct a public hearing and consider requests made by Mike and Tanya Go for a variance to zoning regulations to allow for an attached street-facing garage at 213 Iverness Drive, Trophy Club, Denton County, Texas. With that said, the time is 6:01 PM. I now open the public hearing and ask that staff report by Matt Cox, Director of Community Development. Take over.
All right. Good evening, gentlemen. So, like you said, the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Go, they are requesting a variance to appeal to allow an attached, street-facing garage located at 213 Inverness. If y'all recall, December 5, 2024, their original variance was denied. However, pursuant to ordinance number 2025-25, council held a meeting August 25, 2025, and they amended the waiting period. So, if y'all recall, the waiting period was for a year. They sent it to staff to review. We took it to P&amp;Z. It was a pretty lengthy discussion, and they came up with 90 days. Then it went to council, and then they approved that. So, we amended that waiting period. That allows the applicant to be here instead of a year from December 5. The request is for, like I said, to have an attached garage that's facing the public right-of-way. Section 1402 dot 153, in the R11 zoning, a single-family district regulates the garages. It says, "Attached garages shall not face any public dedicated right-of-way or golf course. Detached garages shall comply with section 1402 253 accessory structures." The applicants are here, and I'm going to allow them part of the presentation as well when I wrap up. But you'll see in the packet, we've got the original set of plans that the variance was denied. Within a couple of months, their architect redrew virtually the same pretty much set of plans, but just had it detached. It came to us. We reviewed it. It met all the ordinances. If y'all have got any questions, I've got those printed off, and I can certainly go through. But it does meet. So, we stamped approved. They started on the construction, but then, like I said, this went to P&amp;Z council for the waiting period. So, they made some tweaks. They made some changes on the plans, and now they're bringing that before y'all to look at again this evening with those changes. The request, there was five main things that this new request does. One, it improves the aesthetic from the street as opposed to detached, improves the property value, of course, improved harmony with the neighbors. So, they've had lots of discussions with neighbors on this project. There is a slight increase in width of the garage. It does improve the accessibility and just allowing, for their parents, this is a case for them, allows their to-movability throughout the house. And then, of course, last, improved accessibility and safety, just assisting with that mobility and being challenged. At the time of the staff report, so we did send out public notices. Those were published in the commercial recorder, and then we sent notices out as per our ordinance, 200 feet surrounding. We had no feedback from those mailings or from the notices. We have had a few emails. We've got some of those printed off for you. We've even received some just in the last couple hours in recommending denial. So, we've gotten a few. And we've got, I think, two of them in front of you, and then we received one just in the last At the, we've gone through, we have gone through all of these plans with the homeowners in depth, and so I'm going to have them come up as well. But staff does recommend that the board conduct a public hearing and move to approve the request made by Mr. and Mrs. Go. So, if y'all have any questions after we close the public hearing, I'll be happy to answer any of those as well.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. The Go's, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, please. And it's just a reminder, so we've got the public hearing open, so we don't have any back-and-forth questions at this time. So, they can do their presentation now, or the other option is you can close the public hearing, and then they can give their presentation to where you can go back. It does not matter. It's just the formality of it. So, if you'd like for them to speak now, they just cannot converse back and forth until after they close the public hearing.
Let's let them have the presentation. That way, we don't interrupt it. You know, oftentimes, I see people ask questions, and if we would have waited 30 seconds, their answer would have been in the presentation.
Sure.
So...
I hope that's the case.
Let's hope so. So, let's have you present. Stay up here, and then we can go back and forth if we have to.
Okay, great. Michael Goff, I was just visiting my 85-year-old dad. It's Goff, cough like G, you know, with a G on it. So, it's my wife, Tanya. And so, we're here to present what we're looking for. Thanks to the board, and the town, city council, and the staff for getting us back in front of you again to talk about our request. And so, you know, I mean, obviously, context matters on all variance requests. And so, context, I met this lovely lady in 1987, right here at the front pool. If anybody remembers the front pool, that's where I was a coach of the summer league, and she was a lifeguard. And so, and she asked me out, and I said, "No." So, but she was dogged, and she made it happen. So, in 1989, I joined the Marine Corps. We eloped, and we left for over 30 years, 30 years active service around the world. And we said, "Okay." She said, "Please take me home when I was done, you know, playing with the Marines." So, brought her back. She said, "Let's go back to Trophy Club. This is where her parents are. They've been here since 1980." And she said, "Can I come home?" She's a nurse, and she said, "Can I come home? We just want to be in this season with my family." And so, absolutely. So, but don't take two types of advice from me. One is which lane to get into when you're checking out at the supermarket, and when to buy a house. Because it was 2022 and 2023 when we were able to move back to the area. So, that was just a hot market. So, you might ask, if you wanted an ADA-like, I know it doesn't apply to residential, but you want an ADA-like friendly home for accessibility, why don't you buy one? We tried. I mean, we tried to get in this neighborhood, you know, what we needed for our needs. And we just missed out, missed out, missed out, missed out. And then finally, at the end of 2023, we were able to acquire 213 Inverness for lots of different reasons. We just, financially, we needed to get done, and then we paid market price, and then some, and now we're here, and we're very happy to be here. And the reason why we bought it was because the lot allowed for some improvements. And we're putting a lot of money, we saved our time, to improve it. We've got a downstairs living space that we've got now at the back of the house. We have approved through the city, through the ordinance, a detached garage, which you see in the top right-hand corner of the diagram. That's what we're building right now. That's, so we're actually at the phase right now, it's glad we can get in front of you, of digging and pouring the foundation for that detached garage. And so, but we figured, since the city changed the ordinance, why not come in front and say, if we can talk to you about what we think is just a better option. So, when we came before, we didn't understand the process. We're kind of newbies. We talked to our neighbors, but we didn't get anything formal. Since then, we've gotten letters from all the affected neighbors, our immediate neighbors, left, right, across, catty corner, you know. And it's a nice letter that says they support what we're doing, and it signs. Some of them are here. Some couldn't make it, but we spent more time just getting with the people that were really affected by the renovation. Even though we have an approval, did they support us attaching it? So, that's what we're looking for. When we were here before, I was on a work conflict when the board got settled out, and I couldn't be here. So, I abandoned my wife, who raised her kids while I was traveling the world. And, but we're here again. I'm so glad to be here. So, what we're looking to do is just, we have that detached garage, attach it. And we move it from, move it, you know, away from the easement. Right now, it's right up against the five-foot easement. I would like to move it to the east, attach the garage, and that gives us 10 feet to the, our property line. It'd be 35 feet from the edge of the garage to the neighbor's structure, and I think that improves the sight lines. But I'm not, you know, we're not requesting that for that reason. We're requesting because then it makes it so much easier for us to maneuver with walkers, or get someone into a wheelchair for whatever reason we need to do. It's just easier to be inside. We have the other option that we're already building, but we just wanted to come before the board and ask for that. So, those are our reasoning. Anything you want to mention, honey? No. So, that's pretty, you know, it increases the property value. It certainly, I think, is a better option than what we currently have approved, which just gives more room and straight out towards the easement. And then, it's the home that we want to have to grow old, and it's not about end-of-life care. It's extended life quality, I think, is what we're looking for.
Perfect. Would you like to add anything?
[laughing]
He's the talker. Perfect. Before you, before you sit down, let me find out. Jackie, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. We have Ms. Pat Kiefer at 216 Fresh Meadow Drive.
Why don't you sit down?
Absolutely.
Let her have her say, and then we'll close it. Oh, would you like...
Actually, you didn't have to sign up if it was on the agenda.
You do, you do have to.
We can get you.
Yeah, sign up real quick.
She can go.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Kiefer.
First of all, thank you to each of you for service to our community, and thank you for your service to our country. If I could just take a second and ask everyone to stand and honor those who fell 24 years ago today, and salute our American flag. Thank you to those who served. Thank you for the first responders. I'm very sorry for the victims and their families in remembrance and honor. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Kiefer, address and name, please.
Yes, sir.
Or, yeah.
Right here.
Thanks, Bob.
For the record, my name is Pat Kiefer. We've lived on Fresh Meadows since 1984. We voted, along with 80% of the other voters, to incorporate the town of Trophy Club so that we could control our zoning. We ask that ZBA uphold the zoning and deny the three zoning change requests, as the board did last December. There are 10 reasons to support your decision to uphold the existing zoning. Reason A, in 2019, town staff recommended amending zoning to include forward-facing garages. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission neighbors and town council neighbors considered allowing the town staff recommendation for forward-facing garages in the R-zoned areas shown in black on this diagram. I think everyone has this, the zoning diagram for the town of Trophy Club. All the black shaded areas are the R-zoned areas that are impacted. Both groups deliberated, and neither group passed that change to the ordinance. One of the emails that was sent late today was by the mayor, Nick Sanders, who was in office at the time, also confirming that he would prefer to have this permission denied, so to support the existing zoning. We ask that you all honor those decisions. Reason B, in 2024, this body voted to uphold the zoning with no forward-facing garage. We ask that you do so again. Reason C, for the third time, town staff is recommending approval for a forward-facing garage. We ask you to uphold the zoning and avoid making three precedent-setting decisions that can impact over 1,700 homes in 18 R-zoned districts with no notice to them. The homes were generally built before 1985. The three zoning variances are, number one, as you heard, the R11 does not permit forward-facing garages, and Matt already read you that specification. Number two, adding an accessory structure, which is what 14.02.253 is. It states at the beginning of that ordinance, "Any accessory structure shall comply in all respects with the requirements of the ordinance." So, when you go down to Part 4 of that ordinance, the first sentence says, "There shall be no accessory structures located in any front yard or side yard." The request before the board shows the garage in the side yard. This district, in this district, there are no added garages in side yards, and we ask you to uphold the zoning and avoid setting a precedent that can impact all of the custom homes in all of the R-zone districts shown in black on the diagram. And number three, the last sentence in that same Part 4 of that ordinance says, quote, "Accessory structures are only allowed if they comply with the zoning regulations in the district in which they are located," unquote. The requested forward-facing garage does not comply with the zoning regulations in the subject district. Reason D, to reinforce the lack of precedent for this request, there are 194 homes in this district. None of them have added an attached forward-facing garage. We ask you to continue to honor the zoning. Reason E, in the current application, question three asks, quote, "Describe how the unique conditions or circumstance do not result from your actions," unquote. The applicant did not seem to answer that question. They just stated what they wanted. The correct answer is, "The situation is 100% as a result of the owner's actions." The owners were denied permission to have a forward-facing garage by ZBA last December. They have removed the two-car garage and are in the process of replacing it with something else, and now they're looking for ZBA to help them solve the problem that they alone created. There are other options. With the pool gone and the driveway demolished, a detached garage can be constructed on the east side of the former garage, and the new driveway can exit the property on the east side of the house, where there is 58 feet to the lot line at the rear, and 35 feet at the side, ample space for both a garage and driveway, respectively. Now, the second diagram that you have is not very pretty and a little bit hard to see. I only have a black and white copier, but you can see that coming right off of the back of the house, there's space for a garage, and then there's ample space for a driveway. A second option would be to restore the removed garage and construct the first-floor suite to the east of the garage. A third option would be to restore the garage, install an elevator, and have two-bed and bath suites upstairs. Before continuing with five more reasons, let me add that a lot has happened in the 9.2 months since ZBA voted to uphold the zoning. And frankly, we've done a similar renovation at the similar dollar amount, and it's painful. Ours was forecast at five months. It took two years. So, I'm highly empathetic, but we did comply with all zoning. Right after last December's meeting, I felt sorry for the applicant. She was so angry, she was screaming. You may have heard her in the vestibule. Later that same month, I took the time to write her an empathetic letter with the nine ways others have helped people who are aging. We have over a decade of personal experience in caring for two of our own parents. I also doubled my normal donation to Senior Services Metropore Meals on Wheels and sent half of it on behalf of the applicant. Sadly, as you heard, town staff has approved a plan that does not comply with the zoning regulations that we have in place, and two of the three precedents that we're asking you not to send, two, two of the three precedents that we're asking you not to set. I don't know how to resolve that piece of it. I don't think that town staff, and with all respect to Matt's abilities, I don't think that they have the latitude to override zoning, which is so clearly stated, where you cannot have a side garage, where you cannot have a forward-facing garage if it does not fit with the R11 zoning. In 2024 request, the applicant cited the difficulty in entering and leaving the garage for her aging parents. For four decades, I've watched owners enter and leave that garage because my office faces the garage, and when you're on hold with Medicare, which is forever, that's what you see. The applicant remarked that today's cars don't fit well in a 1979 garage. In response to the Google query, "Average length of cars in 1979," Google AI says, quote, "American cars in 1979 were still substantially longer than modern cars, but they were shorter than..."
Ms. Kiefer, sorry. We passed the three-minute mark unless the chair would like for you to continue.
I guess we've all read this presentation, and I appreciate you going through it, but I don't think we need to have this read to us.
Okay.
Do you, does the rest of the board agree?
Yes.
Yeah. We appreciate your time and your effort that you put into the work. We do, we have read it, and we acknowledge it. We have read it all 12 pages. Would you like to make a final comment? I'll let you close.
I would. Thank you. I have a statement just like that. In closing, there are a number of people who wanted to be here tonight but were unable, and so they have sent emails in support of denial, as well as the people sitting with me. I ask you that you uphold in its entirety our zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And understand what you're... Next?
Yes, we have, I'm sorry, Joel Kele, 214 Inverness Drive.
Hey, known Joel Kele, 214 Inverness Drive. I've been a pastor in the Town of Trophy Club for over 20 years. I've served on town boards, former Citizen of the Year, currently the police and fire chaplain. And I've seen the dysfunction of our town in the past, and I don't want us to get there again. I've not met this lady. I'm sure she's great. I've seen her trespass in Mike and Tanya's yard. That's disconcerting, but I've never seen anybody with a gall to tell somebody how to remodel and lay out their house, and, you know, say, "Hey, I know you have a pool, but you could just not have a pool and put your driveway wherever I'd like it." and put your driveway wherever I'd like it. They are great neighbors. Mike and Tanya are great neighbors. And I just want to remember, the definition of neighbors, legally stated, is somebody that's adjacent to you. It's immediately right and left, not across the golf course, over 200 feet away. He's a veteran. They want to build it for aging parents. I mean, I can't think of a better reason. In a society where we ship old people off, they want their loved ones to be right there with them and protect them from the heat and the cold. And to have an attached garage makes perfect sense. And the people that live around them, their neighbors, are all for it because we are so thankful that Mike and Tanya live on our street. If I was to move to South Lake or West Lake, and I wanted to drive through Trophy Club and then vote and say, well, I get to vote in Trophy Club because I drive through it or walk by it, you wouldn't let me because you have to be a resident. The people that live next to Mike and Tanya, Tanya, excuse me, they are the ones that have the say. We look out, right across the street is their house. And I would love to see them build a place for their parents. I think it's great. I've seen, this is a warning, when the council and boards don't let great town staff like Matt do their jobs. My wife used to work for the town and the mud. I've seen it. And what happens is, when we don't let town staff do their job, and we say they're unfit to make a recommendation, we lose good leaders, and they go off to other municipalities. So I want to encourage this board that I respect and admire to make a decision, not based on 2019, or 2020, or 2012, or 50 years ago, but this town today, with a population of people getting older every single day. And they're not going to put their parents into an aging facility. They're going to take care of them like they should. And I respect it, and I hope that you would admire that as well.
Did you say your name and your address?
Joel Kele, 214 Inverness Trophy Club. Thanks.
Just want to make sure of that. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay. The time is 6:28. I now close the public hearing. Thank God for this. Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion at this time. Board questions, comments, and the like. Doug, you want to start?
Sure. I have a question for Mike Golf. Mike Golf?
Golf.
Golf? Like golfing.
Like golf with golf, yeah, yeah. I have a golf handicap, yes.
There you go. I've never played enough golf to give a handicap. But my question is, on your attached garage, is it not possible to rotate it 90 degrees clockwise? Maybe make it a little shorter and have it as a, it wouldn't even need a zoning case then? Because you could do that.
Yeah, I don't think we have the room.
Are you talking about like for a J-swing?
Yes.
They would not have the, you would not have the, you would not have the room to be able to do a J-swing and meet our garage? Because we have a standard, the 21 by 22 feet for inside the garage. They would not be able to meet that and have that J-swing in.
But you think it could put a car in there, though? Irregardless of the zoning?
No, sir, because on garages, on our plan review, we would kick it back that the garage is not deep or wide enough, so.
Well, we know it's plenty wide enough because it's roughly, what, 27 feet?
It's just not deep enough. It would not be on.
Okay, okay. Because that's, by my figures, that's about a three-car garage, which you need. You expressed that you needed a nice wide garage. I totally appreciate that.
At least 20, 6 feet to get two cars and walkers and stuff around it, yes.
Yeah, I totally appreciate that.
Thank you.
That was my only question.
Jonathan, Bob, Daniel?
Matt, are these plans different from the ones that were in December that they're proposing?
Yes, that's a great question. So if you look at the way that the ordinance is written, they did not have, they do not have the ability to bring us the same exact thing and say, we just want to run this through again. So there has to be some changes. So if you look. Perfect. So this was the original, and this is the new. So what you can see, the biggest difference is the spacing between the edge of the structure and the property line. And I cannot, I do not know if those, is the next-door neighbors? Just to the, are they here?
Phil and Joel, you know, they used to live there the last time.
Okay. But that was part of their discussion with their neighbor. And I don't, I'm not going to speak for them, but I was there, is that they did appreciate the fact that they did bring it in, you know, that does give some more space.
So is the garage just as deep as it was originally?
Yes, I believe.
It doesn't look as, maybe the scale is a little off.
So it's just not as wide, but it is the same depth.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Matt, what's the distance from the very front elevation of the property back to the front of the garage? What is that distance?
I think it's right at 75 feet, which, thank you for bringing that up. So it was said earlier about, so we've got here, this is the current approved plans. And I think it was up for discussion or debate that I didn't approve them correctly. So I'm going to read exactly what is written. So the following structures and uses shall be permitted as accessory to the principal structure, provided that none should, shall be a source of income. So you can do this, you just can't have a side business, right? Or user of the principal single-family dwelling. And it has a list of things that are permitted in all residential. And this includes swimming pools, guest house, tennis court, flagpole, workshop, greenhouse, storage utility, cabana. But I'm going to read the very first one. Detached private garage in connection with any use, any use, provided that no such garage shall face a golf course, and provided that any detached garage which faces a street be located a minimum of 45 feet from the front property line. We've got 75. That's an easy stamp of approval for me and our staff. And provided, however, that the requirement that no such garage face any street shall not apply where the rear yard of a lot abuts a street. Basically, corner lots is the rest of this. So yes, staff was correct in approving the plans that they currently have.
And just one final question from me, if I may. It's a two-car garage, and Mr. Golf probably would do that. Are you having a single door, or are you going to have two garage doors?
There you go.
Oh, beautiful.
Sorry.
Okay.
And this is the new plan?
Yes, sir.
And it looks like this gives better visibility from the street than the detached, but also, does it give the same functionality? Like, it looks like it might be wider than what the detached is, but closer.
Four feet wider.
So it looks like it gives them a little bit more.
It goes 22 and a half feet to 27 feet wider.
Was the approved plan forward-facing garage door?
Yes, sir. Yes. That's allowed.
And in this plan, with it closer to the house and further away from the neighbor, the view of it is somewhat more blocked off by the house that extends, part of the house that extends out to the front, the side of the yard.
Sure.
So you're not seeing as much of it.
Can you run that by me again? What, Bob, what are you saying?
Well, as you look at the plan here.
The front part is blocking the garage?
Yeah, the front part blocks part of the garage. Particularly as you.
It's that 10 feet.
Yes.
That gets blocked by that den and sticks out 10 feet.
Got it, got it.
So you open up the 10 feet on the left side in the drawing to be able to see all the way through and get it further removed from the neighbor.
There's no chance of reducing the width of that garage? Couple of feet?
Again, just talking with the homeowner on the width, is there taken into consideration not just the two vehicles, but then other accessories that may go along with either unloading a wheelchair or whatever, just to have the extra width? So the garage door is pretty much a standard garage door. Where you're seeing the extra width is on the right and left of the door, of just the space on the inside.
The typical two-car garage is 18 feet.
Yes, sir.
And so this is leaving, what, nine extra feet?
Yeah, four, four and a half on each side, give or take, yeah.
Yeah. Could that be reduced a little bit? I'm just asking.
Well, I mean, you can, again, this is, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong. This is the request that works very best for this remodel and their situation.
I'm just trying to reduce the impact of a forward-facing garage.
Well, again, going back to the December meeting, we did not have this slide to show is that if this gets denied, then we will have.
Detached.
Disapproved.
Yeah, yeah.
And that has a forward-facing garage.
And it's a forward-facing garage.
So this is a significant improvement over that, in my opinion.
And I guess the other thing about it is, even if you take and shrink the garage, the garage door is going to be the same size, no matter what. I mean.
Yes, sir.
It's going to be the same size.
It's required to have a two-car garage. I mean, so that garage, at minimum, see, we have minimums. So they cannot go anything less than 22 by 21 on the inside measurement. So the outside measurement's going to be greater than that because you've got studs and brick and sheet rock and things like that. But the inside measurement, minimum requirement in Trophy Club, 21 by 22.
Is it not true that with it becoming attached, that the view from the front of the house to the back actually is more open than it would be with the detached garage? Because it's moved 10 feet in closer to the house. And the current gap between what was approved of the detached and the house is blocked by the front of the house. So you actually gain a view all the way through to the back, and that was one of the concerns that was expressed, that it's blocking the view. But it actually improves the view.
Well, to your point, Bob, also, the space between the structure, the proposed structure and the neighbors is, what, 53? Did I hear 53 foot or something like that?
I don't recall what that.
Well, the distance from, right now, from the neighbor's house to the detached garage is 30 feet. And when you move it across and expand it across a little bit, it'll be 35.
Closer to 40, 35.
But up to the den up front, that's 50 feet.
Okay. And then on the other side of the property is a pool. You have an open area for a pool and all that kind of stuff. So you'll have open space looking through that to the, as well.
Yeah, the back is, there's open space, there's a pool in the back, and then there's the 20-foot requirement between, sorry, the 20 feet requirement between structures between our neighbor to the east and our property, and our house, yeah.
So you'll have a gap there as well?
Plenty of gap. There's easements there and everything, yes.
Okay, okay.
So as I understand it, this attached garage has better sightline, like visibility from the street, and provides your family what you need. Versus the detached garage that is approved, that you'll go, if this is denied, you'll go through with that, which is more of an eyesore and more hardship on your family.
It's beautifully designed.
Yes.
They charged me for the architecture and the engineering. They said it was a great design, but yes, yes, sir.
Well, I guess one of the things that would be interesting is, you know, not that this ever happens in Trophy Club. You build it detached, you stay there for a while.
Creep.
Not, well, creep, or someone decides to put a breezeway, quote-unquote breezeway, that has not been approved, you know, and all of a sudden you have an attached garage. That is.
Never going to happen on the Marines' honor.
Yeah, but.
Maybe the next person.
You know, I've seen it happen once or twice. Not here, but in other locations. Okay, that's a comment. Any other comments for anybody here?
I remember in the December meeting, there was concern about the water easement. Does this, with this new design and even the detached design, is that an issue?
You know, the detached design was approved by our PE. He's a hydrology, you know, they have a hydrology department. And approved by the city, there was no requirement. We're not, we're in zone X of the FEMA floodplain. So I, you know, we have a flow plan and a drainage plan, and it's going to drain a lot better than what we bought. That's for sure.
Thank you.
Anybody have any comments? Any more comments from board? Okay. Is there a motion to approve ZBA? Oh, Bob, yes.
I make a motion to approve the zoning case, ZBA-25-004.
As presented?
As presented.
Do I have a second?
Second, then.
Call for a vote. Just do it all in one. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? For one. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Congratulations. Okay. Case, consider, agenda item number two is to consider approval of the May 8, 2025 zoning board minutes. Is there a motion to approve May 8?
Yes, motion to approve May 8, 2025 zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consider approval of the July 24, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission and Zoning Board of Adjustment Joint Work Session Minutes. Wow, that's a mouthful. Is there a motion to approve the July 24 Planning and Zoning and Zoning Board of Adjustment Joint Work Session Minutes as presented?
Yes, move to approve the July 24, 2025 Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustment Joint Work Session Minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Okay. The time is 6:43 PM. This meeting is adjourned.